My name is Blanche Valanci. I work on voter services with the Cleveland Heights University Heights Chapter of the League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland. And I want to welcome you on behalf of all my colleagues and volunteers to this candidate forum presented by said chapter. And the Heights Libraries and Future Heights are very helpful partners in this voter education endeavor. We are pleased to welcome all of you here tonight and to welcome those who will watch the recording on the League's YouTube channel. I am told my microphone is not in the correct position. This will be posted by tomorrow morning on the YouTube channel, and we are happy to provide that service for the citizens of University Heights. As I said, my name is Blanche Valanci. Betsy Tracy, Rose Fairman, and I planned this forum along with our chapter chair Wendy Dearing and the support of literally dozens of volunteers, many of whom you see around the room. They're ready to pick up your questions and give you cards to write more. We want to thank the candidates, all nine of whom are here and who are giving their time tonight to help us understand the race for four seats, four seats on the University Heights Council. Recording forums is an expense. If you find it valuable to attend or to view these forums, please consider making a donation. We have a donation box on the table at the entrance. You can also make it online at lvwgreatercleveland.org/donate. There are some slips out there that will give you that information. Click on Donate to a Chapter, and then on LWV Cleveland Heights University Heights Education Fund, we fund these forums out of our nonprofit education fund. In the lobby, you will also find helpful League members with voter registration and vote-by-mail forms if you need them for yourselves or for folks at home. Information about State Issue One and League membership information. I just want to point out, this is brand-new information sheet about State Issue One. It is nonpartisan. It gives the facts of State Issue One and the language that we believe will be on the ballot. Feel free to pick one up, take it home, study it, make your decision in our democratic system. I'm pleased to present our moderator for the evening, Susan Taft. Susan has been interested and engaged in pro-democratic action for several decades. After retiring from Kent State University as an associate professor in 2015, she has devoted more of her time to work with the League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland. She now lives in Pepper Pike, but for more than 20 years, she lived and raised her family in Cleveland Heights, which she still considers home. Susan?
Thank you. Be careful.
Oh, I'm going to ask Blanche, the YouTube channel, can we post the URL somewhere so that people can get that?
There are slips out, there are slips out on the...
Table?
Table. You go to LWV Greater Cleveland, click on Cleveland Heights University Heights, and you will find a button to go to it. I believe there's another way to do it.
But there's a, you have the URL out at the table, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, and if you want, who want to watch this, this gets up by tomorrow? That's pretty impressive. Okay. Tonight is a forum for the candidates for University Heights City Council. I would like to recognize the Heights Libraries and Future Heights for cosponsoring this event with the local chapter of the League of Women Voters. I'd first like to commend all of you, can you hear me in the back? All right? Yes? Okay. I want to commend all of you for showing up tonight, you. As we all know, local elections directly and influentially impact our daily lives, and yet, local elections often draw the lowest voter turnout. So, I appreciate all of you who are filling, this room is now filled up, so we will have probably some standing room, maybe some extra chairs brought in. Thank you for being here tonight. I want to mention also that next Thursday, in the same room, you will hear about the University Heights Charter Amendments. Same time, I believe, six o'clock, no, Thursday next week, six o'clock. To say a few words about the League of Women Voters, it is a nonpartisan political organization, and it is recognized for its impartiality and respected role promoting informed and active participation in government and in advocating for good government policies. We do not support individual candidates or political parties. We can, however, take positions on issues when it's based on League study and review. The League is valued by voters, candidates, and elected officials because it insists upon and makes possible the fair exchange and expression of views upon which democracy depends. The work that the League does is made possible by member dues, donations, and the dedication of League volunteers. As Blanche said, there are probably more than a dozen volunteers here tonight, including myself. Membership forms are available at the registration table, and if you are not a member, we urge you to join. You can do as much or as little as you would like for the League. It is not terribly expensive, and it gives you an opportunity to get voter information earlier and in more full form than if you are not a League member. Membership, oh, and I should say, League of Women Voters, we have male members also. You do not have to be a female to belong. Tonight's forum, our heavy lifters for tonight's forum are Betsy Tracy, Blanche Valanci, who did the introduction, and Rose Fairman, and they are supported by many volunteers. We have a video recording that will be done of tonight's comments, and a voter guide with candidate statements is due out on October 1st. I think most of you have probably seen those in the past. They have identifying information about each candidate, and each candidate has made statements about his or her capabilities, competencies, and background in order to serve, run for office. Those will be out October 1st, as I said, and a flyer for next week's Thursday Charter Amendment Forum is also out there for you to pick up if you would like it. So, I'd like to go through the rules of the forum. We have a large cast of characters here to hear from tonight, so I'm going to be fairly quick as I go through this. We have nine candidates running for four seats on the University Heights City Council. There will not be a formal break. We go until eight o'clock. If you need, need to take a break yourself, just get up and formally leave through the back door, the side door. We ask candidates and their supporters to refrain from wearing partisan items such as campaign buttons or T-shirts inside this room. There is some campaign material outside on the table which you can look at at your leisure. This is a forum to hear and question the candidates. It is not planned as a debate between opposing candidates. Each candidate must appear in person and at the time slotted for his or her race. No stand-ins are permitted. Now, in terms of how we'll run the forum tonight, each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement, one minute to answer questions coming from the audience, and also coming through the Internet. We already have a very large stack of questions that have come in through the Internet, and one minute for a closing statement. Our timers over here will give the candidates a 30- and 15-second warning and a signal when their time is up. We will keep things moving. We will enforce time limits. Candidates can use the table mics and stand, what I ask is that you stand at your place for your opening statement, answer questions seated down, and stand for your final statement. The questions, only written questions are going to be accepted tonight. We don't take oral questions. Succinct questions may be addressed to one or more candidate. All candidates will have the opportunity to answer when appropriate. So, candidates, when no specific candidate is identified, all of you can answer, or you can pass on a question if you choose not to answer. You can signal to me when you're ready to answer just by raising your hand, and I will try to go in some kind of order of when the hand rose. And to the audience, I will say, please, audience, raise your hand to receive a card if you want to create a question. The questions will be screened for a diversity of viewpoints, for appropriateness, and to avoid duplication. We will have, and to ensure readability. If you feel that you need more information tonight than you get at eight o'clock, please feel free to talk with any of the individual candidates after the forum is concluded. You can also look and see if there's campaign material or go to the candidates' Internet sites. Finally, we ask the cooperation of the audience in avoiding any expressions of support or opposition to any candidate during the presentation time or answers to questions. We want to avoid wasting time, taking minutes away from the candidates, and we also ask that you refrain from making statements. You, the audience, is here to learn from the candidates, and you will have your say when you vote. At this time, I'd like to ask you to please turn off cell phones, and no flash photography is allowed in the room. Our nine candidates are running for four seats on the University Heights City Council. Council members serve for a four-year term, and their salary is a whopping $9,100 a year. The candidates are, and I'm going to read these in alphabetical order, Jonathan Bartel, Micah Maliskas, Thrice Marshall, John Rock, Hallie Shalav Turnberez, Alicia Sloan, and Vincent Stokes, also Michelle Weiss and Winifred Weiser. They have drawn numbers to determine the order in which they speak. We will begin tonight with Michelle Weiss, and we will, on the final closing statements, we will reverse order and start with Mr. Rock. So, everybody has a chance of being first, last, or in the middle. For the question-and-answer period, I remind the candidates to please stay within the allotted time of one minute for each response. So, we will start with the opening statement. Michelle, would you like to stand and go first?
Thank you. And thank you for coming. My name is Michelle Weiss. I've been a resident of University Heights for 25 years and a lifelong Eastsider. I've been married for 28 years and raised my family here. Thank you. I have to bring it pretty close to my mouth. I work as a CFO of a large private school. I began to get involved with the city as an observer for the League of Women Voters. I did that for a number of years and then was appointed to the Lay Finance Committee. It was after I was on finance for a couple of years that I decided to run for city council. I built strong relationships during my volunteering years and had solid knowledge of city happenings at that point. I graduated with a degree from accountancy from John Carroll University and went back many years later for my MBA, again from JCU. I've been involved with many professional development leadership organizations over the years as well. I ran for city council to make a difference in our community, plain and simple. I believe that everyone is placed on this earth to be a change-maker. Working for the residents of University Heights is one of the ways I am making a difference. This is not about fanfare or moving up the political ranks. It's simply working for you to make this city the best possible home for you, our residents. There's always work to do in our city. Some of my priorities are maintaining diversity and friendliness and walkability of UH, enhancing our senior services so our seniors can age in place, building new municipal facilities without raising taxes, using tax dollars effectively and efficiently is paramount. Our safety and service employees are working in deplorable conditions. It's hard to attract and maintain these vital employees who keep us safe and continue to ensure the city thrives. There's already an assessment in the works. We must continue to invest in our infrastructure, namely streets and sewers, and regionalism needs to be explored further. The city has shared, has shared many services currently, but new opportunities need to be researched to streamline the budget. I will continue to work to set mutual goals and objectives with administration directors and council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stokes? You need to hold this pretty close to your mouth.
I'm a preacher. I think I can handle it.
Well, then you do not.
Greetings. My name is Vincent E. Stokes II. I am a resident of University Heights. I am a lifelong Heitser, and I'm running for city council because I care about the things that you care about. The 2002-2003 student council theme for Cleveland Heights High School, which I served on, was working together works, and I remember that theme because we all had to work together for a common goal and a common, a common knowledge. This past weekend, they just had homecoming. It's called HoCo now. Don't know what that is, but that's what it's called. And they worked together on making sure that they had a prosperous parade and a prosperous homecoming dance. As city council, I think city council needs to work together with the mayor, and the mayor needs to work together with city council. Personally, I'm tired of the bickering and fighting, and I think we need someone who will be in place, who is an independent. I'm not running to, as a referendum against the mayor, and I'm not running as a referendum against council. I'm running because I think we need an independent on the council who will stand up for what is right, who is not going to be a rubber stamp for the mayor, but also not going to fight against the mayor. So, we need an independent person on the council, and I'm the only independent running in this race. My name is Vincent E. Stokes II, and I'm running for city council.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Micah Maliskas.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this event, and thank you everyone here for taking your time to be with us tonight. My name is Micah Maliskas. After experiencing multiple climate disasters in Houston, Texas, such as flooding from Hurricane Harvey and days spent without power in the Texas freeze, my wife and I made the decision to find a new home to raise our young boys. We spent many months looking for a place that was just the right fit for our family, a community that shares our values of diversity and inclusion, a walkable city, and a climate resilient region. We found all of that and more right here in University Heights. If I'm elected to city council, my goal isn't to radically change the community that brought us here in the first place, nor is it to rigidly oppose moving University Heights forward. Rather, I will lean into our strengths. I will work to further improve our people-focused infrastructure by championing bikeable and walkable destinations in town. I will diligently defend the finances of our city to make sure that we are soundly positioned to serve our residents. I will continue my work on the University Heights Sustainability Committee to protect our environment. Anyone willing to work towards these same goals, I welcome as an ally, including every person at this table, in this room, or in the current city government. As an engineer, I enjoy solving complex problems. As an MBA, I know how to make sound financial decisions, and unlike anyone currently on council, I'm a parent of children attending our public schools. So, I'm uniquely invested in the future of public education in our community. I'm asking you to vote for me, Micah Maliskas, this November so we can work together to make University Heights an even stronger community for all of us. Thank you.
Next, we have Hallie Shalav Turnberez.
Thank you. Hi, folks. As she said, I'm Hallie Shalav Turnberez. I'll be the longest name on your ballot. I'm thrilled to be here tonight and to answer some of your questions about this race. I am a young queer Jewish leftist artist, and I'm also an attorney. I'm running for city council because I think we need fresh new ideas, and especially in a city with an average age of 29, I think young people need to be in the room where it happens. So, for me, participating in local government, thank you. Participating in local government is all about community, and if you've met me before, you've probably heard me say, we need a community center. And the currently underutilized former Wiley Middle School is our dream come true. We need a place to connect, educate, feed, and shelter our community, and there's no better place than Wiley. And we need some, but mostly, we need someone passionate enough to make that happen, someone who will work to make that happen, and that's me. So, I'm really proud to have been endorsed by such a diverse coalition of organizations, including labor, the AFL-CIO, educators such as our very own school board member Jody Serini, the Ohio Environmental Commission's Action Fund, yeah, and elected officials like the mayor. And I'm excited to share all my ideas for rubbish reform and my passion for community with you all during the course of this forum. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Thrice Marshall.
Hello. My name is Thrice Marshall. I am a member of University Heights City Council. I proudly served in the United States Navy as an aviation machinist mate. After obtaining my degree, I became an educator. Since retiring from education, I work as a captioning agent for the hearing impaired. Serving as Community Service Committee Chair for Queen Elizabeth Chapter Nine of the Order of the Eastern Star enables me to continue to provide service to the people of our community. I gained a better understanding of our city's charter and ordernesses while serving as a member of the Charter Review Commission, which allowed me to hit the ground running on city council. The conditions at University Square are one of the reasons I decided to join city council. I am looking forward to supporting an agreement between the city, Target, Macy's, and a developer so that the redevelopment can begin. My safety, excuse me, my goal is to promote the growth of our city, acknowledge and/or resolve our residents' concerns, maintain the relationships with my colleagues and administration. If elected for retention on city council, I will continue to approve, approve legislation and make fiduciary decisions that are in the best interest of the residents of University
Next, our next candidate is Mr. Jonathan Bartel.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event, and to also thank the good people of University Heights who have come out in strong numbers this evening to attend our hearing as well. It is a great pleasure to see that there is so much civic interest in our community. My name is Jonathan Bartel, and that is precisely the reason why I decided to run for city council. I don't have an axe to grind, nor do I believe that things are horrible in our city. I have a deep appreciation for University Heights and couldn't be happier that 25 years ago, my wife and I decided to return to University Heights and raise our family. I have deep roots in this community. My family settled here in the '40s, and my parents met while attending Heights High. I myself moved to University Heights in the early '70s and attended Northwood Elementary. I have been an attorney since 2000 and practiced primarily immigration law and criminal defense. I have a deep sense of providing public service and want to be a member of city council to serve the fine people of this community. I don't have ulterior motives or a hidden agenda other than to try to make University Heights a better place to live and raise a family, to work hard to provide city services that not only attract people to move to our city, but to retain the citizenry through the future. There are two facts that we can talk about tonight relating to our city government. First, that we know that Mr. King, Ms. Cooney, Ms. Sacks, and Mayor Brennan will be serving our city for at least the next two years. The second fact we can all know about tonight is that there is some sort of dysfunction within our government, and that to reelect the four incumbents that are running today would only prolong that dysfunction. Why would we do that to ourselves and to our community? City council needs new ideas, new approaches, independent thought, and open minds, and I'm eager to provide all those things to the city.
Next speaker is Ms. Michelle Weiss. Oh, I'm sorry. Michelle Weiss, Michelle Weiser.
Winifred Weiser.
I got that wrong. I'm sorry. I'll fix it.
Oh, let's start off with a bang. My name is really Winifred Weiser. A lot of people know me as Win. I'm a longtime resident of University Heights. I believe the little phrase "service saves," and I've spent 20 years on various city committees, so I bring a ton of understanding of the inner workings of the city of University Heights to the position. I've served on things like stormwater management, which I'm sure just makes you all excited. I've been on the Finance Advisory Committee, Community Emergency Response Team, and a number of other things. Right now, I am an educator. I'm an associate college lecturer in the School of Urban Affairs at Cleveland State. I hold a Master's of Public Administration with a concentration in fun stuff, Public Works Management, which means I'm into sewers and things like that. So, my experience, I think, brings me to the table. It's the reason I applied and I ended up being appointed to the position, and I'm now running for it. I'm not out to fight with anybody. Apparently, people want to determine that there is a fight. I think that has been created perhaps by one side and not the other side, and I find that sad. In the past two council meetings, I have had to call the question on some people who really do want to get at it and have made accusations that may or may not be appropriate. Those are the kinds of things that I think we need to stand up and say, stop, and I'm happy to do so. I don't care who you are. So, for me, this is more about the residents and the city. It's about making sure that what we do as a council, under the charter, actually works. Thank you.
And next candidate is Alicia Stone.
Alicia Sloan. Hello, everybody. I'm Dr. Alicia Sloan. Prior to running for city council, I was in deep thought. I didn't and still don't have any issues within the city. I thought, does everyone who runs for a local office have somebody, some kind of gripe or grievance within their prospective areas? Respective areas? That's the point. I don't. I'm like most people in University Heights. I love it here. I've been here 13 years. I think University Heights is a great place to live, work, and raise a family. There's no drama with me. I'm running for city council because I want to give something back. I want to help make this great city even greater. My work has already begun. I'm proud to have served the residents as a member of the Charter Review Commission. There will be six charter issues on the ballot this fall, and I hope you'll consider voting for them all. I have served the residents as a volunteer on the Juneteenth Celebration Committee. In just a couple of years, this event has gone from an idea to one of the best Juneteenth celebrations in Ohio. This would not be my first time serving a large group of people. Outside of University Heights, I've helped increase accessibility to jobs and job training for residents in the greater Cleveland area through my work with Ohio Means Jobs. I've worked with committees at Kent State University that bridged gaps and increased students' accessibility to appropriate, to appropriate resources to assist their success as a student. My research has helped several other elected officials make their areas greater on the local, regional, state, and federal levels. I love studying cities. I've been studying since I was a child. What has begun as curiosity blossomed to years of experience that has helped thousands of people. Helping others gives me fulfillment. My work will continue. I'm a mom. I'm highly and diversely educated. I'm a small business owner, and I'm a college instructor at Kent State University. My name is Dr. Alicia Sloan, and I respectfully ask for your vote in this election so that we can all work together to move University Heights forward. Thank you.
And the final candidate, if I can get his name right, is Mr. John Rock.
You got it right. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for attending. I'm John Rock. I'm one of the city council members here, one of the incumbents. I'm finishing up my second term. I'm running for a third and final term. We do have term limits here, so if I win, I will have one more chance at this. I'm also a member of the Planning Commission. I've been doing that for a number of years. I have no problem standing up to corporations who come in and try to build in areas that they're not zoned for them. I've done that. I'm a board member of the City Community Investment Corporation. I'm an elected member of the Democratic Central Committee for my precinct. I chair the Economic Development Committee and chair the Zoning Code Subcommittee. We are currently undergoing a new zoning code. Serve on finance, building and housing, service and utilities. And before getting on council, I actually served as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals. I did that for three years while also serving on the NOAACA Steering Committee for the Bike and Pedestrian and pedestrian-friendly lanes. Outside of that, my professional career, I'm an architect. I work for LDA Architects, I'm the operations manager, so I do the day-to-day operations for the firm. And while I was on council over the last eight years, I voted to get a lot of things done, such as, we did vote to keep backyard trash pickup. I voted for tax abatement for homes that are undergoing renovations or improvements or additions, renovations, et cetera. I voted for residential attached zoning, new equipment, infrastructure, vehicles, equipment. We expanded the road program to include curbs. We added a Charter Review Commission and competitive bidding ordinance. And if you drive around, you'll see the new signs. We got that accomplished, too. My priorities in my next term is to undergo the new facilities. As an architect, I can help right-size that, bring back senior programs that were frozen during COVID, balancing the budget and accountability at City Hall. Thank you very much.
We now will start the question-and-answer period of the forum. And I have a stack of questions, so that we'll never get through all of them tonight, but we will do our best. My, the team of people screening the questions have grouped similar questions together. So some of the questions might have more than one part, all of which you have to answer in one minute. So the first question is to no one in particular, but everybody has a chance to answer. Do you favor curbside pickup and recyclables? Whoever wants it, Mr. Rock.
I'll go first. Do I use this microphone then?
Yes, and you can stay seated.
Okay, thank you. So it's not whether I favor one way or another. It's what the residents want. The residents have spoken not once, but twice. There were two residential surveys that went out overwhelmingly supporting backyard pickup. So as such, our council created an ordinance, 2305, that takes the feedback that we received from residents and made it into law. So we are keeping backyard pickup. We are going to do loose recycling in the backyard, similar to how Shaker Heights does that. I'm very supportive of that. I know we have some candidates here that would like to transition to curbside, and that's their opinion, but it goes beyond what popular opinion in University Heights was, and that was evidenced in the two surveys.
Anyone else want to answer?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. As Mr. Rock did say, there were two surveys, and the majority of both surveys said to keep backyard pickup. This is an amenity for the city, just like our pool is an amenity. If the residents decided a different way, I would be definitely open to that. I am not against curbside. I'm not against backyard. If we did switch to curbside, I'll tell you, there was a detailed analysis done, and it would cost $700,000 additional to do that. And that is because there would need to be a reorganization of our service department. So unless there was a plan through attrition or something like that, it's not even financially feasible at this point. But again, the residents spoke. This was not a City Council decision. We listened to the residents.
Others? Mr. Stokes.
I am for backyard pickup. I have a 90-year-old grandmother who lives in my house. Although she has me to take out the trash, I think about other 90-year-old grandmothers in the city of University Heights who may not have a grandson to take out their trash. And I think that it's an amenity, and we pay very high taxes, let me tell you how they are, very high. And we get this as a service for our tax dollars. And I think it's something that I voted for when I filled out that survey twice, and I think we need to utilize the survey and utilize the data from the survey to keep backyard pickup.
Anybody else want to respond to that? Yes.
Yeah, so a little bit different perspective here. I used to be a researcher, and I have extensive training in statistical analysis, and one of the things I know is how to write a good study. And if you think about, you might, you might be curious, why were there two surveys? And that's because one of them was considered deficient by the solid waste department. So this is an issue that's, it's been muddled a lot. And when you ask people what they want without telling them what they might be able to get or giving them the options, people tend to say, "Well, people fear change." People tend to say, "I'd rather not change it." But there's a few things you might want to know. Number one, we could actually save 25% by moving to curbside pickup. The second thing that you might want to think about is that we current, our current process takes our 11 full-time service workers to complete, and I would never lay off them. There are so many things they can do to help the city, but it's extremely hard on their bodies. They lift hundreds of pounds of trash per day.
Others? Anybody else want to speak to this? Yes, Mr. Bartel.
Thank you. I do believe that it is in the city's best interest to ultimately transfer over to a hybrid version of curbside pickup. If the voters and the residents of University Heights truly demand to have backyard pickup and understand all the facts and all the numbers that are involved with the two various projects, and the residents were to choose to have backyard pickup remain, then of course, as a City Council member, I would agree with the residents. However, I believe that information is missing, and I do believe that there is a possibility to create a hybrid program that not only takes into account people moving trash cans to the street, but also takes into account people who are handicapped, or elderly, or the folks that live with extremely steep driveways, to have service departments who would still have Kubotas to go and pick up the trash. And one, just one extra thing about recycling as well, it's very important that these individuals that get involved with the recycling program understand what it's all about. If you have contamination, the recycling program fails.
Ms. Marshall, did you have to raise your hand? I, let me just say, I am told that there's some difficulty hearing in the back of the room, correct? What, anything we can do about that, Louis? Okay. Okay, we, I can pass the mic around.
I can, I can speak.
It's going to slow, slow us down a little bit.
I'm okay. I'm okay.
Or speak, if you have a loud voice.
I have a big mouth. Okay. So it's proven, if, if the savings that may occur is a small savings, but it's not significant enough, and it has been researched that in order to save money, the best way to save, the best way to save money would be to get rid of workers, and that's not something that I'm on board with. As far as the, the surveys, that was one way that residents have expressed that they would prefer to keep backyard pickup, but I'm going door-to-door and to block parties, and that is one of the biggest issues that the residents are bringing up to me today, that they do not want to change backyard pickup. They're adamant about it regardless of whatever statistics, data, and research and numbers that, that people throw out there. So thank you.
Yes, Ms. Weiser.
Thank you. Don't you wish we would have put it on the doggone ballot? Then we would have resolved this once and for all. No surveys voted. We didn't. There was a professional survey done. The council got it done. The mayor had his survey. The reality is that there are major questions about the savings. Yes, if we don't lay those people off, yes, they could do things. One question, right now, we subcontract out a lot of that work, and it actually may be done cheaper that way. So there's a lot of dollars and cents that were never looked at, and that's why it keeps going back and forth. Right now, that backyard plus the can recycling, loose recycles, is probably a first step towards curbside, but in the meantime, we can gather the data we need.
Any other comments? All right, I'll move on to our next question. This is to no one in particular, so everybody has a chance to answer if you wish. Do you support the concept of ranked choice voting for UH elections?
I strongly support ranked choice voting. I think it's evidenced by the, the state legislature trying to ban it, that we were on the right track. And unfortunately, even though the commission was set out by council, they declined to put this in front of voters on this and several other issues. So even on some of the other ballot issues that I am on the fence about, and I'm not as strongly supportive of as ranked choice, I would still think that we would want voters, and as, as Win mentioned, this could have resolved our trash issues, too, is to allow voters to weigh in on these things instead of blocking them from consideration.
Sloan.
I'd just like to say that not many people may know this, but ranked choice voting used to be the voting system in southern Ohio a while ago, and they used it for a while, but because it is representative, or more representative of what the voters actually wanted, they tried a few times to get it banned. It didn't work the first few times, and then eventually, they did get it banned. So it was a system that worked, and I believe that it is something that can work again. Thank you.
I think the discussion is good. I'm glad it opened, but I think people need to be educated as to exactly what ranked choice voting is. To just turn around and say, "Okay, we're going to go do it," that's great, except for one thing, if the voters don't understand the process, what comes out may not be what you really want to have happen, that it is representative. So we've got education. The door is open. We've started talking about it. We need to continue talking about it. We need to educate all of the voters in University Heights before we actually apply it, so that we get the results that ranked choice voting can bring.
Thank you. What the Charter Review Commission did was actually open the door. There was a lot of discussion about ranked choice voting from a special interest group that was prevented, presented at the Charter Review, was also presented at council. Council felt, based on the votes, to pause that. The Board of Elections is actually coming to the Council of the whole, which I chair. I hope in a few weeks. One of their members is ill right now, and they're hoping that he returns soon. So that conversation will continue, and like Ms. Weiser said, the education piece of that will continue. So the door is not closed. We need to understand it more and learn more. Thank you.
Ms. Turnboros?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to add that part of building a more representative community for everyone here is figuring out how we can make better voting systems. And research shows that ranked choice voting can do that for us. And of course, just like Ms. Weiser said, that need requires public education. That requires helping people understand how that works, but research also, research also shows that the electorate is perfectly capable of doing that, and I have the faith in our community that we want and can implement a more representative voting program.
Oh, now you're hooked up there. Okay. Thank you. I think it's a great idea. I think it's something that's going to require some exploration, but at this point, from what we understand from the Board of Elections, they weren't ready yet either. I haven't heard any residents come to us requesting this. I know this came out of feedback from the Charter Review Commission, so I do appreciate that. Once the Board of Elections is ready and has machines that are certified that can handle this type of voting method, then that's something we can discuss and look into further. I would like to see bigger cities take the lead on this first, like Cleveland, Columbus, Cincinnati, work out the kinks, so that you, the taxpayer, don't have to pay legal fees when things don't go the way they should be going, or when things go awry. So I would prefer that someone like City of Cleveland take this first step while we continue this conversation.
Ms. Marshall?
As it relates to the ranked choice voting, putting it out to the residents, if we were to have passed it and had it going on the ballot, and say we did approve it and vote for it, I had an opportunity to speak with the Board of Elections, and it was explained that because they do not have the machines, they're, they're getting new machines, and those machines are not capable of conducting the ranked choice voting. It would be a situation of holding up the election and keeping the results from being able to be completed because of the fact that they don't have a system in place right now. And I didn't think that that was a good, I felt like that would be a disservice to the residents of University Heights. Oh, let me go on record saying I supported ranked choice voting on the Charter Review Commission, and I also voted for it to go on the ballot. But that also happened prior to me speaking with the Board of Elections.
I, too, believe that residents of University Heights are more than capable of learning and understanding the nuances of ranked choice voting. In fact, had I been on City Council during the time that the Charter Review recommendations came through, I would have permitted all 10 to come before the voters, because I do trust the voters of this city. There will be some stumbling blocks along the way to get ranked choice voting moving, but our Board of Elections is more than capable of getting the process ready for the residents and to enact. I, too, spoke with individuals down at the Board of Elections, and they informed me that although they do not have the machine capability right now, that if the city of University Heights voted for this, and that if had the residents demanded it, that the technology would have been available for us for the election.
The question was if she could have a 30-second rebuttal, and we haven't scheduled that in tonight. Okay. All right, any others? So I do have a question directed to Ms. Threes Marshall. You are a member of the Charter Review Commission. City Council appointed the majority of the members. What is your opinion of council with one empty seat and one absent member making the decision which recommended changes would and would not appear on the November 7th ballot?
Wait. Read that second part again. What is my opinion of what?
Of the decisions that were made about whether the amendments would or would not be put on the ballot. And the beginning of the question was about one absent council member and one.
Not voting? So I guess I'm trying to understand, do they?
One empty seat and one absent. One empty seat and one absent member. Doesn't make sense.
It's not making sense to me. Because they want to know my opinion about what? The fact that somebody was not there? Is that what they're asking?
They're asking you if, if you think that that was proper, I believe, to, to make those decisions when there were two absent council members. Yes, that's a good way to put it. All right?
All right. So I, I don't have an opinion on whether it was proper or not. The rules were followed. Council members have the right to attend or not attend meetings, and that's done regularly. And it's done quite often by some people on a regular basis. Why this is an issue, I don't know, but everything, every rule was followed. The vote was done properly, and that's my response to that.
We have a number of cards that came in with questions about the Cleveland Heights University Heights schools. And I'm going to, I'm going to do two of them, I think. What, if any, relationship do you, each of you candidates, have with the Cleveland Heights University Heights Board of Education? And how do you propose to strengthen that relationship?
So as I mentioned before, I'm the only person here who has kids in public school. Alicia does as well, but no one on council does, and we need someone to represent our kids there. To that end, I have been endorsed by several members of the school board, including Jody Serini, the only.
Jody Serini, the only resident here in University Heights. I'm really proud of the school district. Our scorecards just came out, and they've had a great improvement. And I've been very disappointed going around talking to some people who compare us unfavorably to other communities, when I know that my kids are there and they're thriving. And so I think a lot of it is just making sure that we get out the word about all the great things that our community schools are doing, and encourage people to join in.
Mr. Stokes?
Greetings again. I am a third-generation tiger. My mother went, well, second-generation tiger. My mother went there, I went there, and two of my children go there. One of my children actually graduated this last spring. My relationship with Cleveland High School District is I pay them my taxes every year, twice a year. So that's one relationship that we have. It's very transactional. The second one is I am a teacher in Cleveland School District, so I understand the need for having higher, having education, having education funded properly in the school district in which I live. So I have a very good working relationship. I have several of my former high school teachers who still are at the high school that I still talk to and actually taught my son.
Any others?
Thank you. So like Mr. Stokes, my parents are both graduates of Hite High. I'm a graduate of a public school as well. The one thing that people need to realize is 80% of our property taxes go to the schools. Only 11% comes to the city. So that's one thing that everybody needs to realize. The other thing is, we need to partner whether you go to private school or public school. We have a very diverse community here, and we need to make sure that there is no divisiveness within our city. We need to be partners with both of them. And one other thing, because I know this is going to come up in terms of ed choice, the state has made the law right now that no funds come from the public schools. No funds are taken away that go to the private schools. So again, we need to support our schools because we are residents, but at the same time, it doesn't matter what school you go to, we need to partner, and you have to remember about our taxes as well. Thank you.
So again, I am a retired educator, and I've always taught in public schools, and I will always be in support of public school districts. As far as my children, they are 31 and 26, both of who attended Cleveland Heights University Heights School District. So I do have an vested interest in there, whether my children are students or not. I have also continued to support levies. And as it relates to the teachers, when the teachers were getting ready to go on strike, I was very active in supporting those teachers when the Board of Education was trying to take their health benefits from them in the middle of COVID. And again, I have a vested interest, even as a homeowner. If our schools go down, newsflash, so does our property values.
Hi. Yes, so I am super proud to have been publicly educated from kindergarten through my bachelor's degree. And one of the reasons I picked this neighborhood is I was so impressed with the way our schools teach about community. Public education is, to me, one of the single most important things a government can do. And public education is the best way to work towards equity between racial and socioeconomic groups. So public education is absolutely essential. I don't have kids, and I'm proud to pay those taxes. I'm proud to be supported by Jody Serini, and I proudly struck with, or striked, whichever way we want to use it, with teachers in 2011 for like a whole month. So yeah, public education is so important.
Mr. Bartel?
Thank you. In my conversations with members of the Cleveland Heights University Heights School Board, the topic that keeps coming back from those board members is indicating for them, the most important thing is communication between the school board and city council. Communication between what's going on within the walls of the school and the things that they are achieving in those schools. A couple of weeks ago, while attending a school board meeting, it was fascinating to listen to a couple of teachers from Garrity School emphasizing the great success that they were having in that program with educating their kids in the sciences and great robotic projects. It was really amazing to see. And if I am elected to city council, I would continue that dialogue with Cleveland Heights University Heights School System. And like some other members at the table today, I too am proud of the support that I have received from Jody Serini, our lone University Heights resident on the school board.
Ms. Sloan?
I am a huge advocate for education. I'm a five-time college graduate, soon to be six in December. But in addition to that, I'm a huge advocate for free education. In my small business, it's recreational, but one of my goals is to offer free education there. So I'm a huge advocate for free education. My two kids, one's at Garrity and one's at the high school, they have, the teachers and the administration has done, have done so much work for my kids, and I'm so appreciative and I'm so proud of them. I volunteer there every chance I get. And I believe that educating residents who have an issue with public education, to tell them to dig a little bit deeper, other than a report card grade that that was received, and see what the schools are actually doing before they make a judgment about the school. And I am adamant about letting people know what the school systems have actually done for the kids in addition to what people think they know. So thank you.
I'll just say here, there was a card that mentioned that the report cards that schools get, everybody doesn't start out on the same level playing field. And the report card in no way shows improvement based on where you started.
Thank you. I am a supporter of our school systems. I have, I have supported levies in the past. And one thing that my colleague Ms. Weiss mentioned is the collaboration with the school. We have an exceptional collaboration with the school board right now. In fact, many of you might not know, we don't have a meeting place for our city council meetings anymore. We meet now at Wiley Middle School. One thing that we need to work on is better collaboration with the board to come up with a plan of how many conference rooms are in the city, and how many gyms, and how many spaces in different facilities so that we can better use our resources. Right now, we're looking at building a new city hall. The plan had two auditoriums in it. Well, there's a beautiful auditorium at Wiley. Why can't we use that? So again, I want to partner with the people we have in this city to see what inventory of spaces they have and how we can better utilize our funds.
I can do this quick. I am a supporter of the schools. I spent, I think it was six years as a member of the lay finance committee for the CHUH school system. So I have a good, solid sense of the challenges and the possibilities in the school budgets. I firmly support, you know, working together with the board. I have no problem with that at all. I think we need to look at some issues that, and very honestly look at them, because we can end up with some issues that monetarily, in terms of taxing and taxing people out of the community, and that's where my concern comes in.
All right. So this is another school-related question, and this is for Mr. Micah Maliskas. And I would include Ms. Turnbrows in this also, because it's about the use of Wiley Middle School, which you indicated you were interested in. Mr. Maliskas, your website notes that you want to repurpose Wiley Middle School as a community center, as you did too. What does that mean, and how would you fund it? You answer first, and then candidate next to you.
Yes, I do support that. I think it's a wonderful facility that we have in our city borders. And in fact, Mr. Rock just mentioned that that's an option for us. So we know that current members of council are supportive of that as well. I really think that there's an opportunity to save some money here. It's been widely known that we need new city hall facilities, and there's competing options out there for somewhere between 25 and 50 million. And both of them are very, various levels of just not sure what the real numbers are. But both of them start to talk about building things from scratch. So if we're able to acquire Wiley and repurpose that, it could be a community center. It can serve some of our needs at city hall. And there are some expiring levies that are currently going on right now that we could continue to extend. So we would be able to fund that without raising taxes, but still have access to those funds that are now no longer needed for previous projects.
Yeah, so I agree with everything Micah said. For those of you who aren't as familiar with Wiley, it was a middle school that closed about a decade ago, and it's been used for various things since, notably when other schools closed and they needed a place to go. That's what we used it for, and that was great. But now, it's this wonderful facility with an auditorium, and a cafeteria, and a kitchen, and classrooms, and everything you would want in a community center. And just like Micah said, this is an opportunity for our community. But also, it's in a really central location, and it's full of all these facilities. So what was the other part of the question?
How would you support it?
Oh, yeah. Well, part of this is what we would save, right? And then the other thing is, this is the perfect opportunity for grant writing, right? People who have grant writing experience, and I know that there are a number of people at this table who do, this is a perfect opportunity to do something different in this community. And I am not afraid of being the first community around here doing something new, even though this isn't the first. But that's not scary to me. Let's do something new.
All right, next question, and this is open to every candidate. What would you do to try to improve the current council-mayor dynamic, so important issues can be addressed? And the question says, I'm going beyond indicating that you would be respectful. So they want to hear other answers on what you would do about that dynamic. No hands are going. Oh, there we go.
Thank you. So I, one thing that I just want to state right off the bat is, the current council gets along. I've been on three different councils. We've all gotten along. So there has not been an issue with council. I also want to state that I offered a mediator to the mayor. This was already probably two years ago, and it was declined. So council is, and I can tell you, everybody currently on council, and if anybody else gets elected, I have no problem working with anybody, and I know no one else has any problem working with anyone as well. Thank you.
Let me just insert a question here which seems to fit for those of you who are incumbents, which would include you. It appears that four, and we'll get back to this other question in a minute. It appears that four of you are running as a block. The record shows there are areas of strong disagreement with the mayor Brennan. Are you trying to, are you trying to garner a veto-proof majority to promote your agenda rather than to decrease the animosity between the council and administration for the benefit of the residents? So I would, read it again?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we're going to, oh, great. We're going to go back to the school question. Thank you so much. Thanks. Now that's all I need. Thank you. It appears that four of you, and there are three incumbents here tonight, are running as a block.
Four.
Oh, there are four of you. I'm sorry. I got that wrong. All right. Four of you are running as a block. The record shows there are areas of strong disagreements with Mayor Brennan. Are you trying to garner a veto-proof majority to promote your agenda rather than to decrease the animosity between the council and administration for the benefit of the residents? So this is just for the incumbents. Sometimes it helps when you've had 25 years of business experience, and you've had to deal with management and other groups. And then you become an educator, and you look at things. Part of the problem, I think, lies in interpretations of the charter. The mayor gave to our Charter Review Committee this following quote regarding his vision of council. "To legislate and to appropriate money consistent with or complementing the mayor's vision and priorities." The charter actually gives the council a totally different thing. It requires us to be stewards of your tax dollar. It requires us to look at how the city is run and to work to help improve it. Those two things are different.
Mr. Rock?
Just want to clear up a couple things that maybe are misunderstood in the community. The mayor sets the council agenda every other Monday. So when we come to council, we have an agenda that's prepared by the mayor. We have, on this council, approved 95% of what has come before this committee, before this group of people. So to say that there's a lot of animosity, I don't see it. There's only 5% that did not get approved, but it didn't happen without a healthy discussion and debate. I don't think there's a mayor's agenda and a city council agenda, because we're doing this as a University Heights agenda. Now, city council does have legislative retreat, where we put together a legislative agenda. The mayor didn't attend it. He doesn't attend our committee meetings. So he doesn't partake in the discussion that we have. And as for a veto-proof majority, we've only overturned a veto one time since I've been on council. So it's not something that is really a thing here. It's just a lot of rhetoric.
Does sound mild compared to some other locations. Did you want to say anything?
Whoops, thank you. I do want to kind of flip this a little bit. The mayor has endorsed four candidates, so I'm not exactly sure where this question is coming for, that the four of us are a block. The mayor has publicly endorsed four other candidates. I can tell you, councils work together. Well, we just do. So you have to think about that personally. Where's the issue? I don't believe it's with council.
So I'm going to take us back now to, what would you do, those of you who haven't responded, to improve the current council-mayor dynamic, so important issues can be addressed, and go beyond, I would be respectful.
Thank you. As I stated, I'm a pastor of a church. One of my church members standing at the door. I have to work with a deacons ministry every day. So if we would say that the pastor would be the executor, and the deacons would be the legislative body. The deacons have their own agenda. The pastor, I have my own vision, my own agenda. At the end of the day, we have to work together for what's best for the New Sardis Primitive Baptist Church. So it's not about advancing me, it's not about advancing them, it's about working together to advance each other. Sometimes they tell me, you're wrong, and I have to take that into account. Sometimes I tell them, y'all are wrong, and they have to take that into account. At the end of the day, we have to be able to have that very honest conversation with each other. I'm not going to get everything I want. They're not going to get everything they want. But the end result should be, the congregations should be the ones that advance in the end. So I think you need to have honest conversations with the mayor, and the mayor should be able to have honest conversations with you all and tell you all you're wrong.
All right. As an attorney with dispute resolution experience, I can tell you, there is no such thing as a dispute between one party. And that's an important thing to think about, that if the question's coming up, and if people are perceiving a dispute or a problem, there's something are perceiving a dispute or a problem, there's something there, and that matters. And our community deserves to hear about that and think about that. And I have an extensive amount of experience with mediation and arbitration, and I'm prepared to sit there and think about this and figure out, how do we get through this? How do we look at the different issues and look at what's, you know, being stated as different agendas and figure, how do we move forward?
So I also have a background in engineering process management. And part of the thing that we talk about there is attack the process, not the people, right? We have an issue that we need to resolve, and attacking each other doesn't work. I was really disappointed the first city council meeting that I ever attended, both the mayor and members of council were calling each other liars. And I don't think that's good decorum. So I'm on the record as saying that the first piece of legislation that I'll pass is a code of conduct to help us focus on the issues and not attacking each other. I also support the ballot measure that would put the vice mayor in charge of council, so that the mayor is not setting the agenda, and rather, we can work among ourselves to resolve the issues without having to have that third-party input.
Mr. Bartel?
Thank you. Like Hallie, I am a practicing attorney as well. And each and every day, I spend a good majority of my time trying to negotiate solutions for people that have very differing opinions and differing personalities. And I am able to do that successfully, to get a just result for my clients that is also satisfactory to the people. And I believe that I possess the communication skills and the even-temperedness to facilitate good communication and successful legislation between council and to work well with the administration.
Ms. Marshall?
As it relates to, for the betterment of our community and building the relationships and improving the relationships, when we are having discussions, whether it's via email or in person, all, and it's regarding city business, it needs to be honest, it needs to remain relevant, and it needs to remain professional, and yes, it definitely needs to remain respectful at all times. We must focus on factual information. There is no place in our city's government for personal agendas. And as it relates to getting your own and forming your own opinions, I would encourage our residents, I know your lives are busy, please come out to the city council meetings, observe, see, and hear for yourself instead of getting the information secondhand or on some social media platform.
Any others? All right, next question. This is to every candidate who chooses to answer. How will you support trans people from the rise of anti-trans legislation in this state? And I do believe there is anti-trans legislation either in the works or already enacted at the State House. So the question is, how will you support trans people, given our political environment?
This issue is profoundly important right now. Trans people are suffering, trans people are dying, and we need a stronger sense of community, a more supportive sense of community. We need to fight misinformation, we need to educate, we need to provide community resources, and this is what a community center does. It provides a hub for all of this to be worked through, someplace that we can work to protect our children and protect trans people throughout their life. This is a major issue right now, and we need to care about it, and that's where it really starts. People need to admit and understand that this is an issue, and it matters.
So it's often said that bigotry cannot survive familiarity. And I think, you know, we've also so often been driven into our own camps, and the current state legislature is trying to create a wedge issue around trans people, making people afraid of them for no good reason, just to keep you in your bubble. And so I think if we can, as a community, come together and actually get to know each other, it's impossible to stay bigoted against people. And so we just need to encourage people to actually be together through a community center, through community initiatives. Join the green team. Join something that you can do to serve your community, get to know people, and get to love people. Thank you.
What I'm going to say is what I've always said. We used to have a series of discovery program in University Heights where it was facilitated. We met in small groups, and it helped us, this community, get through racial integration. It helped it get through the diversity that we have in this community, so that people understood one another. Two years ago, I was hoping that we could bring it back. It is something I would love to bring back again. It was looked into, but we're going to have to fund it. And that is the way we re-knit ourselves back. We have split apart from where we used to be six or eight years ago, and it's sad to see, but it is one way we can get back.
I think Mr. Bartel was next. There we go.
Yeah, that's fine. I think there's a couple of things to remember. One is to encourage people to enter into uncomfortable conversations, because it's at the point where, during the uncomfortable conversations, that understanding starts to take place. And very bluntly, it's also good to remember to mind your own business and understand that somebody's personal life does not affect your household. I hear that a lot. It's not, you are the head of your household, you set the line in your household. So enter into those uncomfortable conversations and actually learn something and gain some understanding and be open-minded, and then that is the point at which we get to move forward.
Well, I am a card-carrying member of the LGBTQ community. The LGBTQ community has made a lot of advancements over the years, but with trans rights, they're still under a lot of attack. And so that's disappointing to me. In this country, and in Ohio, sexual orientation, gender identity are not protected classes. But here in University Heights, we have passed an ordinance, an anti-discrimination ordinance, to include sexual orientation and gender identity, so that that is included as a protected class here in this city. We've updated our employee manual. We are trying to be as most accommodating as possible at City Hall. But the one thing beyond LGBTQ issues is bullying. LGBT people are bullied from the time they're young up until adult age and beyond. You have to stand up to bullying. And in this community, there is bullying. We're seeing it in administration. You have to stand up to a bully.
Any others here? Mr. Stokes, we'll get over to you.
Thank you. I became the pastor of my church in March, the third Sunday in March. The fourth Sunday, fifth, the first Sunday in April, a trans person joined our church. So that was conversations that we had as a congregation, and I was asked questions about where would the person use the bathroom, et cetera, et cetera. And my response was, where they have to go. My response was, I'm not checking where people are going to the bathroom. This is how they identify. We need to love people as they are. So my point of departure is always love. I was just out with the UAW a few days ago, marching with them, and I was on the news. And one of the quotes that I remember saying was, "If they come for you in the morning, they will come for me at night." So if I don't take up for you, Martin Luther King said, "We are inextricably connected." So we're all connected in this thing together. So I need to be able to take up for you, because I need someone to take up for me and advocate for me as well.
Ms. Marshall?
So I was just wanting to piggyback on what Micah said. And it's unfortunate that people have fear, just to hear that word, fear of somebody just because they're transgender, is just mind-blowing to me. At the end of the day, it's about being educated, loving people, and letting people live in their truth and being respectful of that. I am totally against any anti-trans legislation, and I will continue to stand against it and vote against it.
We're quite fortunate to live in a city like University Heights. We're such a diverse community. And I really do believe that nine days out of 10, the diversity really brings out the best in our community and of all the neighbors. That being said, I'm also very pleased with the fact that we do have legislation in our law books here for University Heights that does protect the rights of LGBTQ members and communities. And as stated by Hallie and Micah previously, the idea of having a community center is not just a place to offer recreation and sport, but it is a place to offer a sense of community and safety. And I do believe that, as a city, we can further advance our diversity by having programs that would enlighten and educate the rest of the community about LGBTQ individuals and the problems that they have in our community, and also provide a safe place for them to recreate and be safe.
All right. That concludes the discussion on the trans question. And we have a couple of cards here where there are questions about, for all candidates, do you support issue one, reproductive rights? Do you support issue two, recreational marijuana? And do you support issue five, TRICET tax levy? So what I'd like to do is start maybe with, oh, I'm going to have to get over there, won't I? With Mr. Rock. And I'd like to ask each of you each of those questions, and have you indicate to the audience which of those you support or don't support.
I support all three. I will endorse all three. I believe issue one is a choice between a mother and her doctor. And issue two, I believe that's everyone's own right to ingest, to inhale, whatever, any way they want. And we're going to get some tax money out of it, and I've always supported our TRICET schools.
Want me to reread the questions?
No, I'm okay. I support all three. I believe what's good for me may not be good for other people, and what other people do for themselves or to themselves is not my business. So thank you.
I support TRICET. And what, if people want to smoke grass, that's fine, they've done it for years. And yeah, you're right, we'll get tax money out of it. On a personal level, I support, I'll vote for issue one personally. However, I also recognize that issue one is coming down to a vote based on faith or science. Depending, there are people in the community who will have difficulty with issue one, and I respect that, because I understand that they are driven by faith. And it's a difficult thing. I teach a science class, and my students, some of my students are faith-based, and I have had to learn to understand the difference between science and faith, and how that sometimes drives our lives. It is respect for both. Did you answer the recreational marijuana question?
I said, "Fine."
Oh, okay.
I don't drink, so I'm okay, and I don't smoke. I support all three. And as was previously stated, we all live in homes with four walls and a roof, and what you choose to do within those four walls is totally up to you, and I don't believe that I have any right to dictate those activities at all. But I do support all three, and I also endorse that as well.
I support all three as well. And as it relates to issue one, I feel that that is an extremely personal decision, and no one should be judged whether they're for it or against it. It's a personal, it's a personal decision, again, between the doctor and the patient.
All right. So issue one. What you do personally is your personal decision. What you allow others to do is not a personal decision. This is a question about pregnant people, or people who might get pregnant, which extends to more than women. And this should not be a faith-based question. I'll give you one reason why. If we're talking about it, if the argument is that it is faith-based, then disallowing me to have an abortion disrespects my faith. Because in my faith, we are taught that the life of the existing life is most important. Also, I support all three. There you go.
For me, issue one is very personal. My wife almost died when she was pregnant with our second son, and I can't imagine how difficult that is for people now who are blocked by the state with a decision that they have to make about the health and life of their wife or their daughter and their children. So I strongly support issue one. I also support the marijuana issue. It has been used as a cudgel for too many years to incarcerate people of color. And then also, I of course support TRICET, as I support all public education.
Thank you. Mr. Stokes?
All righty. Well, I'm a Black Baptist preacher. And with that, I believe firmly in separation of church and state. I stand firm on, I support issue one, two, and five. Issue one, woman decides, a person decides what they want to do with their own bodies. Issue two, can't stand the smell of it. However, too many of my people have gone to jail for, one, using it, and, two, selling it. So I support issue two, but I think they need to do some more stuff to support people who have been incarcerated for it. And I always support public education.
Whoops, thank you. So the first thing that I want to say is, cities, especially University Heights, which is nonpartisan, needs to stay nonpartisan, and issues like this should not come in the purview of a city. When it comes to issue one, I was actually on a committee with the Jewish Federation of Cleveland, deciding on if the Jewish Federation of Cleveland should make a statement regarding abortion. And I have to tell you that all, and I'm speaking as an Orthodox Jewish woman, you need a medical and you need a religious exemption. So I am actually waiting for our rabbis in our community to advise us on how to vote for that. In terms of issue two, I completely agree that there needs to be laws changed about incarceration. That is a no-brainer. And even the current people who have been incarcerated and are out, those laws need to change. But I do believe that it is a gateway drug, and I will not be supporting issue two. And in terms of TRICET, I think it is an excellent college, and it should be funded.
All right, thank you all. New question. Please share your ideas for attracting and retaining University Heights residents.
So as I mentioned before, I consider myself a climate migrant. I had tried to escape the Gulf Coast and all the climate disasters we had to deal with there. If you look at an article recently by Architectural Digest, the Great Lakes region and Cleveland specifically is one of the safest climate zones in the country. I've talked to residents, I've talked to members of council and other people in the government that have said that this is a declining city. I don't think that's true. I think there's reason to be hopeful about the future of University Heights. And so we need to be building a more And so we need to be building a more dense community to allow us to pay for the services we need without raising taxes. We have $100 million sewer liability that needs to be dealt with. And so those are the sorts of things that the only way to do that is to make this a walkable, desirable, interdependent community that people want to move to. Thank you.
Attracting people to our community is about a whole lot more than lowering taxes. People choose communities based on what's there for them and how a community supports them and what communities are loving. And we can do so much more for our communities. In fact, there's money in the budget that could be doing more to take care of our community, to nurture this community, and to build community. I'm gonna say it like 65 more times, apologize. But that's how we attract people. We build the best community. And you have to have ideas and passion, and you have to want to do something. You can't just want to lower taxes. That does not create community.
I'm gonna start by saying lower taxes because they're too high. They're entirely too high. We can retain people by keeping backyard trash pickup, lower taxes, mitigate that monstrosity called University Square, and have better senior services.
We are retaining and attracting people. We have almost no homes on the market, and the prices have skyrocketed. We are a desirable community, and we need to keep it that way. We have very few pockets that we can build. We have UH Square and we have Wiley. There is no other empty space. So we are desirable already. We need to keep doing better and keep moving forward.
And yes, we need, sometimes people don't look at the taxes till they get here, and then they have a fit. Vacancies, we have rental issues that cause problems on the street. That's something the committee I'm chairing is dealing with. The other thing that I think is critical in some areas of the city, safety is a concern. We've had drive-by shootings, we've had some gunshots in the middle of the night. Those are issues that may not spill out over the entire city, but we have to address those. One thing for sure, it just, we have attracted people, but here's the problem. High taxes and the cost of our homes also are eliminating the affordability of the area. And we have to maintain some affordability as well.
I think Ms. Weiser took the words right out of my mouth. So, we are attracting people, though if you look at the latest census, our city has grown. Family sizes are getting larger. One issue that I did vote on was tax abatement in the city. So if you want to build a new home in University Heights, whether it be a tear-down and rebuild or add-on or renovate, you could do that with the tax abatements where you abate the improved value of the home. Because the taxes are too high. And so to keep the taxes where they're at, they're never gonna go down, I hope you understand that. But to keep it where it's at, we have to be very, we have to have a balanced budget, we have to be diligent in keeping the facilities, the new municipal center at a cost that we can afford, because it ballooned out of control. And we would have to come to you, the taxpayer, for a levy just to fund it. We can't do that. We have to be very careful because we're just a bedroom community, we don't have any industry here. So we had to be really prudent with our dollars.
The redevelopment of University Square really is a significant key to not only maintaining our current population, but attracting future residents to our city. We have a tremendous opportunity at this time to completely redevelop that area and to create a more dense living area that would allow more people to live here, increase the tax base, as well as to have some commercial element to that property. The city needs to have additional people to pay for services that I believe this generation and people who would move in, younger folks who would move into our city, require. They do want to have a community center. They do want to have recreation activities. And seniors in our city really have no services to speak of at this time. And that really is a shame, because there are many, many senior residents that have lived in this city for 30, 40, 50 years. And for our community to completely forget them at this time is really a shame.
A couple of things I've learned over the years in academia and working professionally, I've learned that poverty is spatial, but in addition to that, identity is spatial. People who love where they live, share it with everybody. They tell everybody about it. So I think starting from the inside and building a foundation where everyone here can identify as being a University Heights resident. I'm proud to say that I'm a University Heights resident. 13 years ago, I wasn't. I liked where I lived, but I didn't really call it home. So I think building from the inside out by a foundation based on accessibility and engagement. I always compare this city to, I'm not gonna say where, but other places that have year-round recreation. I hear people keep talking about seniors, but you know, we have other people that live here too, and they like to do things too. So I, in addition to seniors, I think year-round programming for youth and year-round programming for adults. I like to have fun too. And so I think that year-round programming for everyone, not just seniors, even though I love seniors.
So in order to, in my opinion, to continue to, because I do believe that we definitely are attracting people to want to move to University Heights, we definitely need to continue to support our safety with the police and the fire department and support our service department. Give them everything that they need to continue to keep our city clean, functioning, and beautiful. We also need to do a better job of making people aware of our ordinances as it relates to the nondiscriminatory basis of being, landlords not being able to refuse people because they have Section 8. Some people may not agree with Section 8, people moving in, but they have a right to have a place to live and live nice as well as everyone else. So I think we can do a better job of getting that information out there as well. And those empty properties that we have, we need to get those filled, and you know, that's opportunities for more people to move in.
Next question. How much money does University Heights have access to in its investment fund? The card says amounts between $7 and $12 million have been published. This should be a fact and not a hard question. And how would you protect that investment? So the questions are asking, how much money do we have and how would you protect it?
Whoops, thank you. So currently, we have about $7.5 million. We just had a finance meeting, I believe it was two weeks ago. Now, you have to remember, a city needs prudent reserve, which is about 15% of our budget, which is around $20 million, give or take. So we should always have $2.5 million in our reserve. The second thing that you need to remember is that we have 4.1 out of the 7.3 that is unrestricted. That means 4.1 out of that $7 million, we can use, let's say, toward facilities. We also put $100,000 every year away in our capital expenditure fund. So we have already four, almost $5 million that we can use for one building that we do not have to take a bond out for. So those are the facts, and that's it.
I am not gonna have to work out tomorrow.
Okay, well, I can't dispute those facts. Those are the facts. But what is the investment fund really for? That's our savings account. So you have a checking account, you have a savings account. Your checking account pays your bills. Your savings account is like your rainy day fund. What are you gonna do with that? Are you gonna go on vacation? Are you gonna put on a new roof? The city has to look at it the same way. And the city's gonna be here forever, we hope, right? And us, and our households will not be, will pass on to our kids and relatives. So the investment account has to be used for things like capital improvements. We can't use it for salaries or operating, because salaries don't go down. Operating doesn't go down unless you cut services. So we can't use it for that. Let's use it for capital improvements, like buildings, equipment, new roads, stuff like that. And as Ms. Weiser said, we have new facilities that need to get built. With what we have on cash on hand right now, we don't have to ask you for a levy.
The other part of the question was, how do you keep it going? And having served on the Finance Advisory Committee and listening to the discussions for, what, 12 years now, quite frankly, it's keeping your balanced budget going. And that's been a bit of a problem, because sometimes the mayor presents with an unbalanced budget. And that would actually eat into those reserves. I think that is also one of the reasons why people perceive that there's this fight between the mayor and council. It's, part of it is fiduciary duty saying, no, no, we gotta get this as close to balance as possible. And that is the sad point, but here's the good point. We do need some new facilities. Police department, fire department. We're just barely getting the ladder truck and the fire station. And that's the kind of stuff we can use that money for.
I just want to echo the sentiments here. Balanced budget is very important, especially for a local city like ours, where we can't just print money like the government can. But also, we need to keep that balance, right? We want to attract people here, we have to have services that they want. And so if we let our money just sit in an account, we're losing ground to an inflation, and we've been doing so for several years now. But if we do invest prudently in improving our infrastructure in ways that attract people here, like we just talked about, walkability, bikeability, community engagement, those sorts of things are where we will see a return on our investment. So if we're running our city like a business, we need to invest that money in ways that come back to us. And the main reason we get money is through income tax, so we have to build things that bring in new residents.
I'm gonna shoehorn in here one last question before we do the final statements. And I think I'm gonna ask the first four people who move their hands to answer, because I don't want to have us stay late. So, this is a question regarding the new municipal center, projected cost of $50 million. If the city has a balanced budget now, how would you cover the projected $3 million in annual bond expenses? And then they asked, would you cut services, raise taxes, use unrestricted investment funds?
Thank you. I actually anticipated this question, so I pulled out an email that the finance director sent me, and I actually forwarded it over to the mayor after my discussion with him. And this was many months back. So we cannot afford a $50 million facility, period. We just can't. However, we could probably afford a $20 or $25 million, especially with the investments that we just spoke about. So, and this was, again, the interest rates have changed a little bit. So let's say a $20 million budget, just for sake of argument. 20 years amortization, it would be $1.4 million per year. If it was a 25-year, it'd be $1.2, and if it was a 30-year, it'd be $1.1 million a year. Now, you have to remember, we have a pool levy that expires in 2029. We pay $280,000 a year on that. That can be rolled into that. So if we had a 30-year amortization on a $20 million project, you're talking about $700,000, between $700,000 and $800,000 a year, that currently we can afford without raising taxes.
We cannot afford a $50 million facility. Before interest rates went up in this last year, a $50 million facility yielded $3 million a year bond payments, which means we'd have to come to you for more money, or we'd have to cut services somewhere, because we have a balanced budget right now. I took it upon myself to look at the building program. It was a wish list. It was 118,000-square-foot building with 18 conference rooms, two auditoriums, 400-square-foot mayor's office with private shower, indoor parking, gun range, 12-day jail. It was absurd. Okay? So the city council here, we toured facilities in other cities to see how they did it. I have no problem building a new fire station, police station, but it has to be reasonable. What they presented would have been the largest fire station in the state of Ohio. And you were gonna pay for it. So let's be reasonable with it. Let's look at this collectively. What do we actually need? Create a budget around that, and then figure out how we can afford it.
I also oppose a $50 million facility that we have no way of paying for. Thanks.
Like the other speakers tonight at the table, it is my belief that a $50 million facility is unreasonable for our city. What can be done, and what we've spoke of in earlier questions, is communication and cooperation of working with all members of city council, as well as the administration, and trying to arrive at what our city actually needs. What kind of fire department do we need? What do we need to improve our police station in our current jail? And as far as a municipal building, how much space do we need? How many conference rooms? And these are things that would need to have cooperation of everybody working together. Not fighting, not setting your feet in dirt and not willing to budge anywhere. It requires the cooperation, because our city cannot afford a project of $50 million to build a municipal center.
To gently, and I say gently, Jonathan, help bring you up to date, the Strategic Planning Committee has been working for over four years now. And we actually have had an engineering fore-GDP came in, and all of that groundwork that you just talked about, the current council is done. And they took what happened, in part was the mayor's vision and the council's vision, cut that $50 million down to 25, so we could afford it. So that pre-work is there, and there's documents that you can read through, and you will see the amount of work that was done for that. So yeah, you're right, council can work together to do that.
That's a pretty nice note to end on, I think. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
So again, it's no question that we need new facilities. We need the new fire, police, city hall, we need all of that. The bottom line is, we cannot afford the $50 million, but taking jobs and/or increasing taxes are not an option. So we have to get rid of the $50 million and come up with a budget that's much more reasonable.
All right. This concludes our Q and A, period. And each candidate will now have one minute for a closing statement. And we're gonna start at the other end of the table with Mr. Rock, then Ms. Sloan, and so forth.
I want to thank you all for taking your time this evening to come out here. Thank you for the
Thank you for the League for hosting. Again, I just want to reiterate that I'm an architect. And as architects, we shape the world in which we live, work and play. And nothing truer than here in University Heights. We have a few big topics that are coming up in the next term, like new facilities. And that's something that I could help right-size. We're doing a comprehensive zoning code update. I've worked with municipalities throughout 12 different states in my career right now. And so I understand zoning codes and how to apply that here. And we're doing a professional services ordinance so that we can have a level playing field for all professional services. I have to answer the professional services RFQs, so I know how to write these. So that's one thing I want to bring. I've been endorsed by the United Auto Workers, Stonewall Democrats and current and former council people. I look forward to having your support in November as well.
Before I head to pick my daughter up from gymnastics, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. Thank you. I apologize. I would like to thank everybody for coming. I would like to thank everyone that I've met on the campaign trail. I invite you... We are answering questions in 60 seconds and you know that doesn't do this justice. So I invite you to reach out to me and pick my brain a little bit more because you'd find it fascinating in there. It's an honor and I'd welcome the opportunity to listen to you all, as I've just said, and serve on city council. Thank you.
If you haven't figured it out, I'm not a politician. I tend to be more of a manager. So I speak out and I just speak out. I don't do slogans well and I don't attempt to do them, but there is one thing I do do. I look for results. And I look for results for you. I look for results for the residents and I look for results for the city overall. We've got a lot of work to do. I think we can do it and I think we can do it well. I think we need to start working together and that's going to take you helping us convince the administration that we also need to work together. All of us have to. This is not about us. This is about University Heights.
I would like to thank everybody for attending this evening. I really have a great sense of pride in joining this campaign and meeting all the fantastic people that I've come across, walking across the city and talking about my desire to serve on city council. It is my desire to serve the residents and that is the lone reason why I'm here. I do believe that I possess a unique set of skills of problem-solving and cooperation and communication. And I think that I could bring that to the table to help achieve the best results that would move the city in a more positive direction and to achieve the results that we all want to see happen. I believe that my roots that I have in this city and as a longtime resident, I understand the people that live in this community. And it would be my goal and an honor to serve each and every one of you. And as indicated by Dr. Sloan earlier, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. On my literature has my webpage address as well as my personal cellphone number. Feel free to contact and ask questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming out and taking the time to ask us questions and to listen to us. I have decades of experience in public service. I am passionate about serving our community. I listen actively, then respond in a respectful manner while keeping all viewpoints in mind. I advocate for others and seek to be a voice for them. My experience working collaboratively to make choices and decisions needed to protect our country, community and children contributes to my success as a city council member. I have the endorsements of four previous full-time city council members and current council members as well as the United Auto Workers Union. It is an honor to represent the wonderful residents of University Heights. Thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to introduce myself to you and I'm looking forward to continuing to represent our residents as a member on city council.
Folks, there is something really special about a community where nine people care enough to run for four spots. And so thank you all for participating in this and being here. I think there is something really inspiring about that type of democracy, you know? So one of the most important things is going to be to vote regardless of what it is for. So please make sure you're registered and please change your address. I'm looking at JCU students specifically in case you aren't able to vote otherwise. This is about participating in democracy and recognizing that in our city, we need more representation, we need more community-building efforts and we need to take care of business. Thank you.
Well, thank you to the AC for holding up tonight. As an engineer, it's my day job to solve problems. I've also run manufacturing facilities with larger budgets than the city of University Heights, so I know how to handle myself around big cash loads and hard work. And I also, for several years, worked with the city of Houston in the Public Works Department as a contract manager. I was a contractor with the city, so I'm very familiar with writing specifications, complying with contract management. And that's a piece that we really need right now as we're in a transition period with losing our city engineer and a few things like that. So just in general, I know I have the skillset to do this. I think I have the right passion for developing this community into a really vibrant, walkable, inviting place that we can all belong to. So I appreciate you coming out and please vote for me in November.
Thank you, League of Women Voters. West African ad, it says, "If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together." We have to be in this thing together. Fannie Lou Hamer said at the 1964 Democratic Convention, "Whether you went to Morehouse or No House, we in this bag together." And I say this to us today, we are all in this together and we have to fight together, not against each other, but together against the problem. So if you're sick and tired of bickering on city council, vote Stokes. If you want to keep backyard trash pickup, vote Stokes. If you want senior services that's going to support, seniors, vote Stokes. Vote Vincent D. Stokes II for City Council of University Heights on November 7.
So I've been on... I've been working for you for the last eight years. I was elected twice to city council and furthermore, I was appointed by my peers twice to be the vice mayor for you. I've tried to be the voice of reason and connectivity between the mayor and city council. I always try to compromise and to come to consensus. You want members of city council to disagree on some issues because it's times like those when real change happens, but you want them to do it respectfully. We need to come back to that place of respect where communication is clear and outcomes become invested by all. I read a quote from an author, Brad Thor. He happens to be an action author, but it resonated with me. Democracy isn't about how you are different. It's about how you are the same. It's about the rights and freedoms everyone enjoys and how everyone protects them. Democracy is also about your responsibilities, your duties as a citizen. When people begin to see themselves as members of a subset first, it is a flashing red light, a warning that a nation's democracy is in peril. We live in a beautiful bedroom community that's walkable and friendly. We can always strive to be better, but we must do it respectfully together. Thank you.
This will conclude our University Heights Council Candidates Forum. Just a reminder that next Thursday, same place, same room, we will have a forum on the charter amendments. So please join us then. Don't forget to pick up materials as you go out. You're free to talk to candidates and be sure you are registered to vote on or before November 7. Thank you.